Okay.
Who is that?
That's the, uh, that's the Zoom.
Are we doing?
We're not.
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Uh, I think you start.
Oh, okay. Like call meeting to order? Uh. You usually do first.
You need to call roll?
Yeah. Why don't we call roll for the Bingham Township?
Film?
Here.
Smith, here, Huffnagle?
Here.
Archer.
Here. And we will call the meeting of the St. John's City Commission to order. Why don't we call roll as well?
Huffnagle?
Here.
Gerstke?
Here.
Heiser?
Present.
Deliso?
Here.
Dzerka?
Here.
So you have the invitation.
Yeah.
The invitations.
Okay.
Eric, if you mind, uh, please put.
Invitation?
Sure.
Please join.
We can stand as well as stand.
Oh, yeah, we just asked you to join us in this meeting. Uh, you've called us to this place to, uh, make decisions on behalf of the, uh, Bingham Township and the city of St. John. But we just asked you to join us here, give us wisdom and guidance as we make decisions on behalf of the residents of these two great communities. So finally, we just ask you to join us again in the name of prayer. Amen.
Amen. They join us in the pledge allegiance?
In pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move of the agenda from the Bingham Township trustees. Everybody had a chance to take a look at it? Any questions, concerns, or? Have a motion and support, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Owe is the same. Motion passes.
Motion being ordered to approve the agenda as presented.
So.
Second. It's been moved by Heiser, seconded by Huffnagle that we approved the agenda. Questions on that motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Um, if we could, I'm gonna grab the microphone too, just to make sure we capture everything. Uh, we have a new commissioner, so I, first off, uh, want to welcome Chris Deliso, uh, to the joint meeting. Uh, this is his first meeting with the township, so I thought it would be helpful, just had everybody go around, introduce themselves and what.
Eric Carter, Bingham Township trustee.
Oh, well, they know you.
Yeah, we've already had one.
Jessica's missing on township, Carter.
Eric Selm, Bingham Township supervisor.
Tony Huffnagle, the trustee of Bingham Township.
Amy Work, the clerk.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Uh, I think we're going to turn it over to, um, to Chad and to Eric, just to talk a little bit about, uh, progress since our last meeting on October twenty-second.
Thanks, Sheriff Mayor. Thank you, Supervisor Selm. Um, as always, um, Supervisor Selm, I and, um, Lieutenant Homer had a very good conversation about the latest draft, uh, for which was included in the, uh, agenda for tonight's meeting. There was, uh, somewhat robust changes throughout the document that were tracked for your review. There were fairly straightforward changes as it pertains to, uh, onboarding of new communities, um, the separation of the, uh, board, um, you know, the constitution of that, uh, et cetera. Small clarifications, no large changes. I think the, the key in our review of this document, which, um, as I think, um, Mr. Homer said before is, um, you know, these, this agreement is a good, uh, big step for both of the communities. And as far as the, the language that kind of formulates our working relationship as we move forward towards, you know, um, an agreement. So I'm really, uh, happy with where we're at. And certainly, um, I, I'm available to answer any questions. Obviously, still, Americans, you're still here with regards to our conversations, um, that we had in detail a week and a half ago, I think now.
Yeah.
As soon as the thing is kicking in here, but.
Yeah.
You know, um, uh, yeah, very good, very good discussion.
I agree.
Uh, anyone comments, questions on the progress here? Concerns?
Go ahead, Mr. Homer.
Yeah, absolutely.
Touch base on it?
Sure. Um, so you, I, you have, uh, sorry, you have a red line version in front of you. These were all of the revisions, um, that I think we discussed, uh, at, uh, the last meeting. Hopefully, we, um, incorporated those revisions the way, um, you had articulated them. I think we did, uh, ran those, uh, both, um, um, in consultation with, uh, Chad and Eric about those changes, the wording. Um, and I think we had everything that was discussed. I'm not aware of anything that was overlooked or that was not included that was mentioned at the last meeting. So, uh, but if anybody's got any questions about any of those provisions, uh, certainly willing to give an answer.
Mike, can you talk a little bit? I, I know we had some discussion last time about, um, one-party exiting and, and dissolution of how, how that, um, how that process would occur?
Yeah, so we, um, if you remember, right, we had dissolution before withdrawals. We flipped that now.
Yeah.
So that we deal with withdrawals first. Um, so we tried to tighten that up too, because at least as I understood the comments last time, um, both boards or the board, the township board and the, um, city commission wanted it to be somewhat painful in order to do so. So we have in here that, um, in the event of withdrawal by participating municipalities, representatives shall be deemed to have resigned from the board of trustees. That does the authority on the date of the delivery of the resolution, and the board of trustees shall be automatically reduced. All of that green, and I, I hope you have it in green. It's green on my screen. Okay, so all of that green is just moved. All of the red is new text, right? And so we put in there that any municipality withdrawing shall pay the corporation an amount equal to its share of all outstanding obligations of the corporation upon the effective date of the withdrawal. For the avoidance of doubt, it's intended to obligate a withdrawing municipality to any obligation, including any cost of disconnection of the facilities between the resolution for withdrawal delivered and the effective date of withdrawal. Meaning that there, that withdrawing municipality would be on the hook for any of those costs and expenses between the notice and the effective date of the withdrawal.
What's that?
The dissolution then comes next. Um, and, uh, it says, you know, if the corporation is dissolved either by agreement of constituent municipalities or by any other means, the infrastructure of the corporation, i.e. pump pipes, treatment facilities, and other hard assets, shall remain the property of the municipality whose jurisdiction and the infrastructure is located. All other assets and debts of the corporation shall be divided based on the allocation of population and contributions under Article eighteen. And then Article eighteen talks about the, uh, the intention of the rates and fees to cover all of that, but contributions could be, um, required. But in any event, those will be done in terms of proportionality of population.
See anything else that needs to be reviewed?
Looking at our team to see. Mr. Gerstke.
Just maybe some clarification, if you could. Um, Article ten, uh, there was a transition obviously there from, um, it's like, you know, the hiring of specific individual. It's, I'm just wondering if there's, because it, to me, it has some conflicting measures against Article fifteen, um, that, that does reference a director. Um, I'm just wondering if it might be best. If, uh, you know, there's something added there where the board of trustees may hire, uh, or designate a specific individual if they choose to, to leave that nuance in there. I mean, I understand the start of this might be different versus the end of it, and that's what I'm trying to get to is, you wouldn't want to have the appearance that the board stays in that hands-on operation, which to me, Article ten has that appearance where you want to get somebody in there that's actually going to run the organization, not, you know, the day-to-day. Uh, Article ten, to me, appears to have the board running the hiring of all people, which could be an issue.
Yeah, so I want to make sure I differentiate, because the executive director under Article ten is not the same as director liability under fifteen. Um, director liability under fifteen is a member of the board of trustees in a director position. And then you have the officer liability, which is even different than that. Okay? So I don't want to necessarily conflate those terms, and we, we can clarify that if we need to. Um, but the intent was to, based on our last, um, meeting, was to do away with the executive director. At least that was my take on the discussion.
I think we had said, we didn't know what the title would be.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, the way I'm reading, you know, Article ten, uh, the board of trustees, the trustee may hire employees and contract services. But in the same respect, I think that that should be a shared potential transition to may hire or and or point someone to do that. So I'm saying where the board doesn't have to hire every individual.
Understood.
Yeah. Yeah, they hire a director.
The director.
Whatever the term may be.
Yeah.
Uh, to oversee it, then that person does the hiring.
Yeah.
For that.
See Chad, Mike, jump in.
Yeah, I think, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think that the, the, the thought process on this was that, you know, initially, that there was, uh, the, the, you know, a hundred percent of those services would be contracted out to the city as far as the, the, the management of utilities and, and day-to-day operations, and that would be through a contract, and perhaps that contract could designate someone, and I'll talk about him because he's sitting right here, Director Smith, uh, as, as, you know, perhaps that individual that would, you know, kind of report, you know, to, to, you know, of this body. But in, in time, not knowing what that is, it, it's, that's where the board came in, is hire employee, could be a director or, it would serve through the contractual services through the city. And I think that's where that flexibility came in there.
I, I could certainly, um, you know, we could certainly create some additional language to put in there, like the board of trustees or its delegated authority.
That don't, I'm just thinking like forty years down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty, forty years down the road, when all of us are, are not in that conversation anymore.
Well, you might.
You know, somebody might take it out of context. Kind of impose power to will that that board really probably shouldn't have, and that's not what it should be, you know? To try to be controlled.
Yeah.
So I think something as simple as that could solve that.
I think there's a word to it as you speak.
So I could just add it, uh, the board of trustees or an individual or entity delegated by the board of trustees may hire employees or contract for services, including another company to, uh, bottom of our list.
Perfect. That's great.
Yep. Mayor, I have another one.
Absolutely.
If no one else is.
Mr. Go ahead.
Um, under Article eighteen contributions. And, and maybe I'm just reading this in the immediate, just a little highlighting, um, um, let's see, um, ultimately, it looks like the third sentence, contribution finance and all operating expenses of, uh, corporation um, be made by the corporation by the participating, which I've got rid of that, to constituent municipalities based on, this is where, to me, it's, it's a little confusing, on a meter basis flow, uh, capacity sewer water service provided within the city or and within the township. Is it, are we looking to, so we're gonna meter every, we're assuming we can read everything that's going to be coming to us? Or is this going to be a one-meter situation or an F to one on a plant basis and then divided?
I think it could be, uh, could be a combination though. And I think that, that, that goes to, uh, perhaps, you know, conversation later, but, you know, there's an easy button where there's a, you know, a, a contracted meter flow to, to the, the township. Um, simply, you know, a regional, uh, like a multi-meter, you know, installed within the system, measuring a singular point, point flow. Uh, perhaps as we move continually, maybe they're just, as, as we have it, which is based on, you know, the potable water meter for each individual service. So I think that's, um, I, I believe, I'll look, I'll look to the, uh, S wire to my right, um, that, that provides the necessary flexibility for metered flow based on, uh, whatever structure the agreement has at that given time. I know that this, the board has talked about, um, or I'll say the boards have talked about, um, wanting to move quickly for that. That, that may take, um, that might be a two-step process. We've kind of talked about, you know, one way or the other, and maybe that first process is a, a master meter for metering all flow, for example. Or it goes towards flowing other way. But I think that this may provide flexibility in, you know, determining what that flow is.
So the follow-up on that, how many? Um.
Users?
Uh, users that do not have a water meter that are, I'll say, a sewer-only customer. That.
That's where you'd, I think you'd have to have a master discharge meter from the township before it enters the city system.
Right.
There's a shared assets there. I mean, like right now, it's discharging the scot road.
Every user we have has a meter, even if they're sewer-only.
Yeah.
Has a water meter.
Yes, sir.
Even if they're on the well.
Right, I get that, but.
But infiltration and, and other things that may come with everyone. So the, the, how is that meter?
So that's metered on an F meter that they have, but I, I get what you're saying. So there's going to be, if this goes well, there's going to be a substantial cost to the township to upgrade, I know even somewhat, but to get the correct connectivity with our SCADA system. So then we will get the outputs directly from the lift stations, and that will be their billable sewer flow. Because then that addresses I and I, because we have a major I and I problem that, um, I think it's the Eric Selm memorial trailer tour.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Memorial.
But, you know, we have a serious, so that gets billed to them. So then we can address the, uh, the, the I and I as well, but I know it, if, in, in Jordan's been in, in contact, but if we come to an agreement, there would need to be that connectivity, so our, the, all the stations connect to our SCADA system. We're real close, if I.
Yeah, it's in process.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Mayor, I want to have a clarification on the contributions and what it's referring to.
Sure.
I'm not clear about when the different parties would be needing to chip in money, um, along the way. We're talking about this being, um, a, a body that is charging rates and having covering the cost of operations. At what point in the future might there be additional costs, um, that may be borne by the participating units? And, and I have a question or think it's up to the word may, I mean, it took shall up, it says may. But in reading that full sentence, it's not obligating either of those parties to pay him on, it's saying that they may. So, uh, two different questions there, yeah. Same section, so I want to bring both of them.
Well, I think that the issue is, is those types of contributions, and there's a couple that form that they'll take. I think that's where there, we, you know, further discuss what, what those are and what, what forms they may take and how they're charged. So I think that's a, you know, kind of our to-do list, if you will, of what those are. There's also the, the other contribution that we talked about for a long time about just kind of a lack of, that kind of general fund contribution. So, um, there, there's still some outline, um, opportunities there to be more specific in that language.
So is there a scenario where there would be, um, a proposed, um, extension, um, within a particular unit that would, the authority might say, well, because it's in the city, that cost is borne by you. Or likewise in the township, where the authority could say, well, according to the contribution section, it could be borne by them.
Well, yeah, I think there is, if I can there, um, there, there is a, uh, somewhat telegraphing of that with, with regards to the dissolution clauses within the document, which speaks to if the infrastructure and, and, or the, the dissolution occurs of the authority, those assets go to the, you know, jurisdiction in which they lie. So that may give rise to a proper funding mechanism for those within each jurisdiction. I, I don't know if that's the right way to approach it or wrong way to approach it with regards to an authority, um, but, but certainly that, that's an option as far as how those economic, you know, development type of functions are, are driven within each jurisdiction.
And I, and I agree with what you were, how, as you were saying that, and where you were heading with that, but as you were saying, it popped into my head, well, what if the authority goes out and obtains financing for a project that is either totally in the city or totally in the, in the township, then as far as buying, you know, as far as paying off that, that, that bond?
Yeah, I, well, I think a lot of what we're talking about is economic development and, and extension of services, and, and I think there's an important issue on, on what the philosophy of our collective engagements, you know, our, our partnership, how that's approached, because I think it's approached in a couple of different ways. If it's a cooperative agreement versus an authority, one, I think one way is a little clearer than others, if we're gonna, you know, talk about dissolution clauses, you know, maybe the perfect cooperative agreement, it's in the, it's in the township, the township's responsible for it. And then if, if there's a dissolution, well, the township gets to keep the infrastructure.
Right.
That's a clean way to do it. It's not to say that there's also not a, a way that we can develop that for an authority, um, type of agreement. But I think the point that you raised is, is a good one, that we would have to.
Dig in.
Noodle on that type of language. If there was a, I, I think the, um, one big bucket of charges that would have to be considered, and Director Smith and I had this conversation, are there's capacity-based assets. And I'll, I'll put my, you know, as I've said to you many times, uh, Supervisor Selm, my township had, you know, if I'm, if I'm arguing from the township's perspective, and there is a bond that is sold to increase the capacity of the waste water treatment plant that costs twenty-five million dollars, well, that plant resides in the city of St. John's. And if there's a dissolution, that is, I would say, an inequitable way of, you know, addressing those assets. Then in large part is paid by the, the township, and they're now, you know, perhaps receiving no benefit of that. So, uh, that, I think, issue does need to be addressed in some way, shape, or form. And, and, um, you know, and I think that, you know, if you look at that in a microcosm, that might, oh, easy way to handle that is an urban charter agreement. There's a contract, there's a flow, we've got, you know, we can hook up the, the pump stations, George SCADA, build the flow, and we're done.
Well, you might have just stumbled across the solution, is that, that there's a dissolution, that a contract automatically becomes effective.
It could be, sure. Yeah, that could be, uh, certainly, aye.
But that, but all of this is the reason why we want it to be very painful.
Agreed.
Absolutely. The thought, the hope is that it never happens.
To reach that.
Right. But we can, so.
Mr. Gerstke.
Just kind of taking that thought, Director Huffnagle, and ultimately this further discussion. And the articles be what they are, and maybe Mike can weigh in based on his experience. It, to me, we need to ultimately get to the point of what, what are we looking to do with this authority? And that would ultimately kind of solve how we're gonna, how it's going to be paid and what boundaries, who does what. Is this going to be, is the authority going to be all encompassing, going to take on all the assets, own all its own assets? Um, and then contract for the services to run them, or, you know, there's multiple different ways that go, but I think almost we got to solve that a little bit before we get too far down the road. I'm looking at Mike thinking, am I, am I lying thinking that? Because I, I don't see how we get the document be what it is, but if we don't solve the, the ultimately the foundation, the mechanism of how this all works, and to me, that is, does it, is it all one hat, like a great lake water authority situation? Or is it a hybrid situation? Is it, somebody owns a plant and rents it from somebody? You know, there's all kinds of, and really, I think we got to have those conversations before we get too much farther.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, it's kind of like that the authority will own and operate all of those assets during the term of the authority, right? And there are certain capacities, if there's a withdrawal or dissolution, uh, they could be painful. Um, so, but they, to some degree, right, you have to trust the memory of the authority that the two boards place on the authority. One, that they're going to operate in the best fiduciary interest of all of the users, because remember, the authority is going to have a district, right? Here, here is all of the users in this district. Those users consist of whole city and township resident, but that is the area now that they serve. And their charge is to operate that system with this fiduciary obligation to make sure that, or to ensure to the greatest extent possible, that it operates as an enterprise fund, you know, supported by the rates and charges. New developer comes in, they want to extend it, how are we going to do that? Are we going to specially assess those properties that now are going to pay for that extension? Are we going to sell bonds? Are we going to increase user rates because of it? Do we have to? Are there going to be contributions by the municipality? All of these things will fit in for that. The, the contribution piece is an interesting one, because extensions, in my view, are easy. Typically, you would require a developer to pay the cost of those extensions. The harder one is, you know, what if you have unanticipated failure, and you've got an expensive repair cost that you need essentially a bridge loan, right? So before you can collect that money through an increase in rates and charges, the municipalities need to fund that. How do they do it? You know, is it by contribution? Does the authority go out and buy or sell bonds? And does the interest rate make sense? All of those things figure into it then. But for lack of any other, um, sort of description, the members that you appoint to the authority board will run the day-to-day operations and should do so in a way that makes good fiduciary sense to the system as a whole, not township versus city.
Right.
Right? They've got, they've got a job to do, is run this system, make sure it's economically viable. Part of the problem is, you go around the state now, you can go to a lot of different communities who may own their own sewer system, and they're reluctant to raise rates, even though they're then subsidizing it with general fund or other money. Well, that's a recipe for disaster.
Why we're all in a position, we are.
Yeah, so, you know, I know people don't want to pay higher rates for sewer and water, but it comes at a cost, and if it can't support itself, then contributions might be necessary. Nobody wants to do that. It should be borne by the people using that, that system. So, um, that's why the contribution went to, we had this discussion last time on shall or may. If we need to tweak that language further, because I understand your point too. It's like may as in, we can probably ask you for a contribution, we may say no, right?
Yeah.
Um, where it should be contributions, um, may, are required and may be made or may be required. We can work on that language. I understand your point, so.
The Brits probably have a lot.
And that, does that answer? Does that answer your question?
It does, it does. I just wanted, I didn't see in here, and it's probably my fault skimming through it. I didn't see where it was 100% decisive in the fact that it was saying that the authority would assume all assets. Because to me, in that respect, so the authority is gonna take on all the debt that's existing there. So how's it, how to deal about doing that? How do you make that transfer?
Yeah, and so, you know, that's probably requires a closer examination of what that debt is and whether they can take on that debt. Or, you know, to the extent that that debt is owned by the city, then it may be required to make some payments from the authority on the collection of those user fees back to the city to pay that debt. I'd probably rather do that than try and assign the debt obligation. But it depends on what it is. I assume we're talking about bonds.
Because I'm sure you can set that up as a legal agreement between the authority and the city.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just listening to Brad, he took me back to one of your comments initially was, we need to let function as it's supposed to as an authority. And as you're speaking, that's why I do believe that's how we should perform with it. The function is that, functions are there. If we need to do a feasibility study, determine, all right, what is the debt? You know, how do we sign that? You know, I think that's, that's one of the things we need to move forward fairly fiduciously, right?
Yeah, to me, that's a start of the process. I mean, there's gonna be impacts of that. You know, for both communities, both have no, the township's particular situation. But for the city's particular situation, there's gonna be, there's gonna be impacts and we're gonna need to plan for that, right?
Question, Hyder?
Let's go back, we'll go back to the beginning a little bit. The appointing of trustee who it talks about, it can't be elected officials. And you talked about last time, Mike, that it's gonna be a conflict. How do other authorities get around that? Because there's central dispatch authorities that county commissioners sit on and different aspects like that. How do they get around that?
Well, the difference here is the potential contracting issue, right? We're going to have multiple other contracts likely. We'll have contract for the operation and maintenance, where now you're sitting on both sides of that. One, as you say, a member of the city commission on the authority. And the other, as a city commissioner on the city commission approving the same contract that you just helped draft or have comment on as your role as the authority. You can't fulfill both fiduciary responsibilities at the same time.
Well, how do they do that? Because, I mean, even in central dispatch, the county's gonna have contracts with their authority potentially for, I'll say, RMAS or, you know, different software. How do they, I mean, this is done throughout the thing, so how does that all work then?
Yeah, I can't talk to other, I mean, each statute too is different. Like, there are some statutes that specifically authorize things that you might consider to be in conflict that are not by statute. So I have to look at the specific statute to know whether or not. And there's this other component, which is, maybe they just ignore it.
Well, yeah.
But, but it doesn't make it any much.
I'm not saying it's right either. I mean, I'm just, yeah, because you see, there's different things, you know, do you create it under, you know, Act 233 of 1925? Does that get you around that aspect of having elected to sit on it? Because at times, you know, you're putting, I'll say, a lot of financial control to non-elected people that really probably don't have to answer back to any parties. In theory, that's not a bad thing, because then they have autonomy. If they need to raise the rate to be what it needs to be to run the system, that's good. But at the other aspect is, do they just go rogue and they have no oversight? I mean, I know each municipality could pull their appointment, I get that, but, you know, then what's, what purpose do you give that authority? Well, that's very similar to like a county situation, right? You gotta have people running that that have no accountability and stuff. I mean, that same scenario works out there, it's, I guess, I get what you're saying. I, I don't know, because I have elected officials on my board that go back to the same municipality, so I don't know.
It won't, and I, I have that too.
Right.
Yeah, you know. Sorry, with contracts existing between them, like, for instance, let's suppose you have a member on your board who's also a member of a city commission. Are they negotiating both sides of that contract? Because it's a clear contract.
Well, if, I would argue that, yes, you're correct in that assumption, but it's not really a negotiation. It's more, the way our authority works is it's more of an approval, not a negotiation.
Yeah.
So they're approving a contract that maybe they've been involved in, but they're not changing nuances on the other side.
But on both sides of it, yeah. And I think, I don't know how you fulfill your fiduciary responsibility at the same time.
I disagree, I understand.
Yeah. Now, there are exceptions, even under the conflict of interest statute, dealing with threshold population, but that threshold has been increased now, I think it's 40,000. And there are certain exceptions then, but only if you are part time and there are all kinds of exceptions. So those could apply, I don't know. But I, you know, we, we had a conversation, obviously, at the last meeting about this. And so, you know, if you want me to look into it further to see whether or not that presents a problem. I just, at first glance, it would be a conflict issue that we either need to identify and work ourselves around. Or come to the conclusion that legally, you could serve in both roles.
If I may, I personally, if you don't, if we're, if the group's okay with that timing, because I'm looking at continuity back and forth, right? I mean, this is gonna be a big piece of everybody's puzzle. And although you're pointing, sometimes that communicated line isn't always maybe what it should be or what it could be. And this is, you know, it's a significant thing. I sure would like to see the ability for the township and the city at least to have a member on there that can, if they chose to, at least go back and forth, communicative wise, I think it's important because
Or restricted to one.
Well, that's my opinion, and that's just because of, I've seen the other way. You know, so I'd say less of a forum of the board for us, you know, we can have three. You know, so if we had two of the, if it's set up for five, you know, if we put two lines, we wouldn't be a forum of the city commission, but, you know. I mean, whatever, I mean. I don't care, I think.
How about we have Mike look at it? See, Mike, can you look into it to see if there is a way? And probably the, you know, we kind of went back and forth on that one last time. Well, I think that, that was our conversation.
Yeah, and I like good people, but it's still the communicative.
I get that, how do you strike that balance, right?
You could have a liaison appointed by the government.
Yeah, you could have a non-voting meeting, three or four. But you have a non-agreement dialogue.
And that might be second to.
Which I think you need to have that.
Yeah. Either you're requiring your, your report.
Report for it.
Yeah.
So we'll have Mike look at that, see, see if there are options out there.
One of the things regarding the ownership of the assets, I guess it's something that kind of gives the impression that the authority would own it. If you look at Article 2, subsection D, second paragraph, where it's talking about new partners coming in. All newly added municipalities must contribute a sum of money in or asset equal to the pro-rated share of the assets of the authority at the time, and the municipality is at it may be in credit, or some amount of blah, blah, blah. You know, unless, if you're talking about those assets being, you know, newly purchased, assets are limited to a truck or, you know, whatever that might be. But it almost infers that they're assets being held by the authority, it could be broader than that. And I don't know if that's what's intended in that section, that's what came to mind when I was first reading this.
So I think the first piece we gotta, I think, as we said, we gotta kind of sort of hear how assets are handled, who owns what, because that would be contingent upon that. So, question, Gersky?
I have one kind of thought maybe from the group as well, that it's not in here at all that I've seen. But it might be advantageous for it to be in there, is some type of capital improvement budget to reserve assets and, you know, that, that requires the authority to do so.
Would that be part of the articles or in the bylaws?
In my, I would think you'd want it in the articles, because you wouldn't want, the bylaws will be developed, both will be by the board, changed by the board eventually. So to me, this is in the constitution, they have to do this. And I think that would be in the best interest of both parties to know that, hey, they're collecting the rates and reserving the funds to do whatever rehabs they need to do in the future, so they're not coming back to us. More money, more money, they're, you know, and they'll have to be part of the budget process. But I think having it in the, in the articles would be better than the bylaws, so that's So. Maybe under the, you know, for the Article 19?
Well, I didn't know whether Article 20, I'm talking about, because Article 20 is really a sort of a capital improvement analysis, right?
I was, I was getting that, but I guess the terminology, I wasn't specific enough on, so it's like make it clearly the recipe of plan.
Yeah. Because it talks about capital asset need, right, including a cost analysis. Now, we can call it anything you want. I mean, we could say a needs assessment, current, future operations, including a capital asset plan.
Well, wouldn't you, wouldn't you, wouldn't that as a part of that, if you have a CIP?
Right, right.
So, yeah.
And some terminology of funding it, to me, because I don't see any funding mechanism. It just says that they, they're looking at the assets, but doesn't say that they have to, they have to actually fund it to some level.
And how they're going to fund.
Yes.
If I can hear, that was one of the things I was getting mentioned, you know, Supervisor Sillman, that, that's you know, the manner in which it's elected to fund is a key component of how that reserve is calculated or endogized. So we've been having that conversation at St. John over the past year. But certainly, I think, important to be able to, you know, telegraph and to ensure that the system is operated and maintained in the manner in which it operates at its peak efficiency. Which takes money to do.
So, I am naive about this, but when they submit an annual budget, wouldn't they budget for those things?
Well, to me, it should, there's probably two, there's two parallel paths there. To me, there's an annual budget and then there's a CIP as well. So to me, it's two things that have to be approved. And that's, and that's just probably more based on my experience between the two authorities, the ambulants and this, it's two separate things. So I guess probably more terminology than anything, but
Capital budget.
That, hey, there's a funding and a plan that's approved, and this is why we're capturing these funds, it's explainable. Not just going, hey, we're gonna do these projects, this is what was in our plan. Well, where was the money captured for all these years to do that?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
So, taking a look at Article 20.
Yep.
If, if we wrote it or inserted language that said, "Corporation shall be in, in the third priority, divide between thorough, sufficient, corporation's current and future operations, including a capital improvement plan with anticipated capital asset needs, including a cost analysis and proposed funding."
I like that, but that's, that's every five years, right? Or every ten years? I think part of Article 19 needs to be an annual operating budget and an annual capital.
Like a six year.
This is what we're gonna buy.
Here's a six year plan that goes along with the budget. And then every other, every five years, you're getting somebody outside to come in, check rate. It evaluates the big, the long-term viability of the year, it should be updated and shown again.
They need to go together.
There were a lot of
There's a lot of talk going on there. You didn't catch all that?
No, no, I got, I got the gist of it. When you say, so Article 19 is the annual budget, right?
Yeah.
Okay, what's the other?
There's an operating budget and there's a capital expenditure budget.
Wouldn't that be in the same budget for that year?
It wouldn't happen.
You could, you could say that, you could say the annual budget, but must include six years of projected capital expenditures. I mean, if you wanted to say the annual budget's gonna include, it's gonna get to the same concept. It, it, you don't have, you know, the city does it two separate ways and then combine together at the end. Or just do an annual budget with a six-year lookout for capital needs in that annual budget. It gets whatever we need.
How's the ambulance authority do it? Isn't that two separate budgets at that point?
Yeah, I mean, essentially you're
It's simpler that way.
You have a capital budget and you have not, that's where the per capa comes in. That's your capital budget.
Right.
Yeah. In, in our particular, my particular situation, our authority, it's a, it's a percentage, you know, every year, your view. And you have a 30-year CIP on all the assets, because that's typically all the assets you're gonna replace somewhere at that time. And there's more in the future out, but that's what you fund in, and you accrue the funds and it's from a percentage. You know, so you set that funding percentage, do we want to fund it at 100%? Do we have to fund it at 70%? Because there's different nuances, there's interest gain, and you know, when you start getting large some of the money, you know, you don't have to fund it 100%. You could fund it at a lower rate, but the interest did work.
Chad? Well, I think what that gets into, what, you know, Commissioner Gersky was maybe referring to is this softening or rounding of the ring structure to account for large future capital expenditures. And I certainly, you know, whatever agreement we, you know, land on is, that should be like a 10-year, you know, outlook, really, if we can. You know, for example, rebuilding a pump station. You kind of know, you know, maybe every 20 years or so, it's a major rebuild and there goes, you know, $1.5 million. Well, you're gonna need to stock away some money for that. So, which speaks towards, you know, a robust annual analysis and maybe a deep dive every five years as far as how much money, you know, should be in your savings account to be able to pay for those, I'll call them plug, or larger maintenance costs that are needed to account for major rebuild of stations or replacements of horse manings or upgrade of the headworks, et cetera, et cetera.
What he said.
Other issues in terms of what we're seeing in front of us?
Mike, you good? Yeah, I think so.
So your face is looking You're making all kinds of faces.
Make sure you're Yeah, so, no, so I, so I kind of reworded Article 19. And it would say, "The authority shall indicate its percentage of the line item operating budget to corporation for tentative approval and a capital improvement budget for anticipated capital expenditures for assets identified under the needs assessment and capital improvement plan under Article 20."
That sounds pretty good, yeah. You should be a lawyer, John.
That links the two, yeah.
Very good.
The only question, at least on the needs assessment, you know, this one had a beginning in 2030. Do you want to do one, you know, at the, at the get-go?
I would think it should be at the commencement of Yeah, the authority in that, just every five years after that.
Yeah.
Because I think your CIP plan and our CIP, they're gonna blend it together the first year to get you out of the gates, to see where we at. For example, five years, 10 years.
Other feedback? The last one. But what's? Well, we'll continue to look at this document as, as we said, this is, this is the legal side. And we'll, we'll continue to keep this in front of us and look at revisions. But I think what we really wanted to do tonight was, was get into this, this roadmap. And I noted the times were a little off, so don't, don't everyone hold their breath, there's only gonna be 10 minutes. Because I think this is the longer part, I think those two times are clipped around. I, I think it's important is, you know, Supervisor Sillman and I have talked
Supervisor, Silma and I have talked. We're all talking of this concept of, of an authority, and we know that there's a lot of pieces that need to go into. Um, our understanding to make sure we're both comfortable with our direction. And I remind people, our, our overall hope here is to get a, a utility agreement. That's a win-win for both sides, and that's what we're trying to, to really get to, and this certainly is a, is a vehicle for getting there. But as we go, we might find other, other information out that we've gotta consider, um, as we move forward in terms of, of this partnership, so. Uh, I know when Eric, Eric Silma and I had, had chatted, we said, you know, we really, we need to know what those decision points are. What are those background pieces, documents that we need to have in place, um, beyond just the legal part? Um, you know, what's it gonna look like, we've had this conversation already, you know, assets. What does capacities look like, um, what does buy-in look like, I think there's a, a, a lot of these pieces, so. Um, I thought it'd be helpful this evening just to start to get those lists, and then sort of put them in some. Logical order, uh, as well as how long we think it's gonna take us to get some of these pieces in place, so. Uh, what I was hoping tonight, I asked Chad, and I know Chad worked with, Justin worked with Christina on our team. To at least start a list, um, I'm hoping you can share, and then I'm assuming we'll have additional. Uh, content or pieces that we might wanna add into it, um, as we look, so. I'll turn it over to, to Chad, possibly Justin will jump in here as well if he needs to. Uh, in terms of what, what are those steps that we need to take?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and, you know, Director Schmidt and I, and, you know, um, you know, financial directors, we have. Robust discussion on some of these issues, uh, also, um, you know, C B was involved in some of them. This is in no particular order, and this is just kind of a, I'll say a, a breakdown on issues that we need to kind of. Figure out how to, you know, how to reconcile, uh, and I, I, you know, detailed these and maybe in some of our in-between meetings, we can. Um, further scrub, for example, um, I know that this has been talked about before, uh, at, at, at the joint meeting level. Like detailed use of city personnel, you know, city personnel is masked in, in operations outside. What would be typical of a, you know, utility use and hang or function. You know, making sure that that's something that, um, i- is addressed, and, and we, we, uh. Provide language that we can, and need to continue to operate as we are. Um, Mayor, you'd mentioned this in your comments about, you know, questions as they relate to capacity buy-in or addressing the capacity. Issues, I'll say.
Um, Chad, if I can, wh- what, what does that look like, is there, I mean, is, is there a form of a study, is it, you know, I mean, how? How and who really puts that together, are we looking at someone outside, is, is that something that Justin go look at, you know, what, what? What is it, what does it take to do that?
Well, certainly, um, there are agencies, financial agencies that can come in and kind of. Uh, assist that, that are involved in bringing, you know, two municipalities together to form. Agreements that are in the mutual best interest of them, um, depending upon all the different variables that they're looking at, because a lot of the things, you know. Two, you know, agreements are the same, they're dealing with different issues and dynamics, so. That certainly could be one of the options that we, um, a- all elect to, to do as, as the joint board is to. You know, bring someone in that looks at what typically is done when two, you know, um, municipalities come together with regards to. One, you know, owning the, the wastewater treatment plant, the other looking to partner, and, you know, willing and, and a desire to partner. How is that handled, um, that could be on, certainly, uh, something that, that they could do. So, that, that could be something that the, the joint boards, you know, elect to, to bring in to kind of streamline that process of. How those issues are, are addressed.
Does that also address then, um, future capacity needs, I mean, there's kind of current, and then is that a look forward then? And we've talked about, you know, I, I think our last meeting, we talked about where our capacity is at sixty percent. Um, we know the township, uh, has what, two hundred thousand, uh, already. Uh, I know, Justin, what you triggered for me the last meeting, we said, you know, eighty percent sort of that limit. Where we gotta start thinking about even more capacity, and so, you know, my question is, you know. When we just talk general capacity, are we also talking about what that potential time horizon or logical time horizon looks like, where we say, okay? We're, we're at eighty, now we gotta start thinking about how do we get to a hundred thirty or a hundred fifty?
Yeah, I think there's opportunity to look at it in those two different types of buckets. One bucket is, could be the existing built-out capacity of the plant, you know, the current. I'll say, um, rented capacity that the township had, which, there's no. Of the rent being paid for that, that's the structure of the agreement right now, and I think that's something that, you know, the board may want to. Address is, is how do we handle that, or, 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 or address that capacity issue for the, the two hundred thousand? And then maybe eventually, how we address that from a, you know, increased capacity perspective? Or if there is, let's say, additional, I'll use the term, rental of more. Existing capacity of the plant prior to expansion. I think once the plant goes into expansion, I think then the, the structure of financial contributions is, is different. We would probably proportionally pay whatever agreement we could be working under, you know, the, the township would pay a, a proportionate share of that based on. Whatever calculation you use to pay the debt service, or the authority would, would pay that through their, through several. Correct, yeah.
Brad, would? I was, I think Chris had said, I think essentially all that would be in the authority's heads, it would be a. Managing that essentially, and then whatever that percentage, i- it's gonna be covered in the rates. So rates, it's, it's, you're bringing it all along, so whatever the rates are, the rates are. Right?
I mean, that would be, if you wanna talk about a concern, is that there's a lot of development that, say, in the township, say, a new factory comes in. There could be a lot of, um, a rate can be, have to be hired of, for plant expansion and all that, so there'd be. You know, I'll say the city users are, their, their rates gonna go up to support the expansion outside the city limits, it could happen. But on the other aspect of it, bringing more people in from the, the township side of it, could actually help out stabilize the rates for. You know, the residents within the city too, because, you know, costs are going up, our flow is not gonna go up, more flow. Helps offset some of those costs, so there's a balance, an act on that, so I mean, I think after anything, it'd be, the authority would pick up.
Yeah, we're looking at the authority putting everything in operating solely as an authority, uh, really is independent, it does.
Takes care of itself.
It doesn't matter what the city or, or whatever does, it handles itself.
Yeah, I should believe so. My new big question, would all of the assets would transfer to the authority?
I, I think that's one of the questions out there, I mean, I think.
I think that was the intent, right, Mike?
Yeah, I, I think it's an outstanding question, depending on the debt obligation, right, you can't impair the debt. Um, so whether there can be an assignment of the physical asset and still maintain the security of the debt. Like the, the bonds, right, because the bonds, although they're not tied, they're most, bond will be tied mostly, particularly revenue bond. Will be tied to the rates and charges you collect, not necessarily the asset. But we, we'll have to examine what existing debt is out there, but that, that is the, the intent would be that the authority would own and control all of those assets. During the duration of the authority.
But not the employee, you say? Yeah, so, you know, one of the, one pieces we've discussed is, uh, right now, the employees are all the. Um, employed by the city, and one of the challenges is, and I think that's why, uh, Chad mentioned this detailed use of city personnel, because. We have, uh, several instances where staff are split between different departments. Um, so it's just not as smooth as saying, take these employees, move to the authority. What we've envisioned, um, still over discussion is certainly a contractual relationship where the authority will contract back. Initially with the city to provide the services, and those employees will continue to do their work, right? Which makes sense.
And I think, but Ken Mayor, um, one, I'll use the term tie bar, but that maybe not be the perfect word, is the. The additional contribution amount, which is, is kind of addressing some of the things, some of the concerns with. The additional, you know, residents, additional, I'll say, pressures with on, you know, the city's general fund, supporting additional people. And so that formula could, could, you know, also be, uh, yeah, an important part of. An agreement, I'll say it that way, on, on addressing overall concerns that we've talked about for a while. The, the other things that we were just lifting up, listing up, and I forget, we currently have seven constitutions. I thought it was seven, but I, I tried to push it on spot now, um, you know, there, I believe the township has. Six, so obviously that's a, a, a large increase, and we have to develop, you know, higher staffing for that is. The one enough or two enough, you know, just those kind of staffing, you know, rightsizing, you wanna make sure that we're, you know, um, operating the system. Efficiently. Uh, Director Smith mentioned this earlier, just about the overall integration of the systems, I know that the. The, the, and there's efforts I'm going now with the township of integration, integrating the, the scatter abilities. Of, of the, the pump stations, that would obviously just have to come to fruition, um, a- as we move forward. The. I, I believe if we move forward with the authority, and I think, um, we're certainly discussing that, but if it is a, a different type of agreement. You know, that would be, do we operate the system as one holistic system or two separate systems? Um, I think that was just, you know, on the, uh, just making sure that we're all on the same page.
You know, they're gonna do that.
Just clarify, that was the water.
I was just gonna say, it would only be the water.
Essentially, the sewers is one system.
Right.
But we need to clarify, if there's gonna be an interconnection, and we're gonna operate it as one system, or if we're gonna operate as two systems.
I think water, the goal to operate as one, but I think that.
But again, wouldn't that be the authority?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could, you could do it both ways, there's one way that's. Operationally easier, if it was one system, with two systems, now you got twice the amount of paperwork with the state, twice the amount of regulations, blah, blah. Just so we know, in, in areas I'm aware, that's, it's not a quick process, just connecting two flights, you know. We need studies of pressures and, you know, the best place to connect them and that, we, we just need clarification if it comes. Was the ultimate goal to operate the water as one system or individually? I mean, I think, I don't think, uh, a- authorities obviously don't have them fast, so. If the ultimate agreement was to move towards authority, we could start the process of that connection, so that we're not. Into an authority in two years, but then another eighteen months to connect the water system.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be connected to start the authority.
It doesn't have to be connected, but it would be nice to at least get that process, because it's not a quick process. We have to look at where's the best points, you know, pressure-wise, how does their, I, I think, two wells. Am I correct, you know, three, you know, do those actually plug in, is there a way to do that? We used to have two wells that operated on the south end, it creates the, it created a lot of water main breaks in a southwest quadrant of our city. We took those out of operation, and then moved to just all of our wells coming to the plant, one. System going out, that eliminated those water main breaks, so that's something we need to look at, because we don't wanna increase operation costs for this authority, and all of a sudden. You know, you as a township's going, oh, man, we just bought into a piece of junk, you know, and, and now our operating cost is going to fix water main breaks on a. Service that's not ours, so just, just wanted to throw that out there, that that's not a quick process, and wanna get an idea from you as a township, if that was your goal. To see those, I mean, in my opinion, it makes sense, there's eagles not getting any simpler to work with, and. If I tell my operators, you gotta operate two systems. And anybody from Bangor, stop me if I'm wrong, but I think that was our intent all along, is. Is what's best for the community as a whole, not what's best for the city of Saint John's, or what's best for the Bengal Township. And i- i- it, it seems that the city is getting close to, and somebody might have mentioned it. Needing another water tower, well, we've got a water tower that is underused, so, I, I mean, it makes sense to bring the two together and, and.
And, and I, I think operationally, we have two employees that we've talked, we've come into the system, right, and so.
About one and a half.
Well, one and a half, and so they'll be very familiar, so for that time, you know, until we get the analytics and how those two systems come together. We're covered, but I think the, the goal is to move towards that one system, like you said, Eagle is not, you know, gonna get easier to work with, it's gonna get harder. I think we have processes that we can move forward with.
Noted the, um, water systems, so thank you for that clarification, Justin. Um, you know, we talked about not really understanding the, the, uh, timing. I'll say necessary for the M twenty-one quarter, I know that there are, um, gains afoot out there, and. Not knowing exactly how fast we need to or desire to, I think those are maybe two different answers, but. Just, just out there, it's something that certainly I think we both would like to address to the max- maximum extent possible. And then I put on here, just from this discussion, um, either return of assets after dissolution, payment of outstanding debt. Uh, and then how our, you know, assets handle overall, just things we need to figure out as we continue to move forward. Um, those are just some of the, uh, things I, missing anything there, Director Smith?
Questions first, or Chad or Justin on this?
With heart.
Yes.
A lot of the proposals that we're, that we've got from our, uh, engineering firm. I heard a lot of what he was talking about, but I think will be covered by a lot of what we're looking at getting started.
Yes, what we're, what we're looking at is, I can understand, what we're looking at is looking at our system as a whole, and so that, you know, we're looking at whatever's pressure to be. The analysis of the water system, what are our full capacities, and what are the wells and everything, uh. Uh, looking at the asset management plan for the water and sewer, uh, the G I S, keeping all that plugged in, and also talking about. Trying to get our C I P plan done for the township proper, because I know when the two come together. One of the first things we're gonna have to do is do a C I P plan, plan overall, as the two systems pull together, so we're trying to be prepared for that, so that we're pro-active. And moving in that direction, and then the other piece that'll probably need to happen, and that'll be a joint, um, with the feasibility study, which. Not trying to be presumptuous, but I, I spoke with our, our engineers, said, hey, this, could you throw something together so we'd at least have a roadmap of what that would look like? And so they're working, working on that for me, just so I can say, here, this is something to take a look at, and, and how we walk forward. Not that they would have to be the individuals, but just at least we'd have, um, some educated, um, information to look at if we do it.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. To your point, a lot of that stuff that Eagles requiring, like reliability studies, asset management, lead and copper. The quicker we could join those, we don't have two W S S N numbers, two utilities out there that are needing those, um. And, and a lot of this stuff anymore is needing engineering assistance to it, you just can't simply, you know, submit it. Um, so that, you know, the, the sooner this agreement does take place, we could get those systems into one W S S N number. Um, you know, we wouldn't have the redundancy in a lot of it, I think you guys are just kinda now, and that you've just become a type-two system, I believe. We were, and then we weren't. Yeah, so you're just getting the. Yeah. Warm cozy from, uh, Eagle of all the, the regulations and that stuff, so.
True, more, uh, the other piece of, about doing the asset management plan, what, what would be born out of that is, what is our system? What is our system worth? What is the value? That's one of the items that I'm. So that's one of the items we've talked about, so we'll have the answers, answers to that. The other piece is, is the two systems come together and you start looking at grant funding. Ability to get funds out there when all this is in place.
They have, I had the discussion with the two grants we already have in place and both indicated that there would be no issues with. Creating an authority.
There, there's no issue with creating authority. I guess the question is with your grants then, how specific are they in terms of?
How it's used?
Yeah.
It's for extending water to for economic development. It's pretty big.
Okay.
Mayor, just bring something up. You're talking about an. Assessment and evaluation of your system, then where are we looking at ours as well? We should be doing. Yeah, I know we talked about it in previous meetings, but I never heard it brought up again, so I don't know where that fits into our timeline here.
Yeah.
And I hope so would be.
Outside evaluation and not just.
Yes, that was, that was sort of my question, Commissioner Hufnagle, too, is, is I think. Trusty Harder laid out, yeah, asset management, CIP plan, feasibility study, evaluation system. Uh, how, how do, you know, our assessments line up with what they're gonna have in place? I mean, is it, is it gonna be easy to bring those together? I mean, are we comparing apples to apples here? I guess is the question. I'm asking.
Yes, so we're working towards that, the. Complete distribution system material. Service line material inventory. Major undertaking that we had to do. So we've been extremely tied up with that, still are. Uh, so as soon as we get that, uh, the, the final one to Eagle, we'll get our letters out. We've already have contracted with Spicer to complete, uh, both asset management and reliability study. Um, they're also gonna create, within that contract, they're gonna create a new model of our system. So a model i- is basically, it's gonna look at all our pressure zones and where we're at. We haven't done one in quite some time, and in the last. Five years, we've had a major expansion and the one thing I've tried to do is do a pretty. Major water main project every year to increase our, you know, reliability and our pressure to the zone. So. Ours in, in the last five to ten years, we've had some major changes within our water system. Um, in, in so our model doesn't, isn't nearly what.
Up to date.
Correct. And up to date. So that's in, in the process, so. Indirectly, I think both utilities, in, in correctly if I'm wrong, have kind of worked towards this idea that. Put it in the back of our brain that at some point it's gonna make sense to connect. But I, I think you guys work with, with Spicer as well to do a lot of that, so.
We do.
Even though legally or politically, it hasn't been kind of behind the scenes, this idea of this coming down the road. Has been looked at because I, I think it just, on the water system, it, it makes sense, you know. So I think once we get, they get their asset management, reliability study, all that, we can kind of probably. Mesh those, I would think. That might be a good question for Brian when.
Yeah, I said, listen, Brian, I know the city's working on this, we're actively pursuing it or talking about it. And he said, listen, once both systems are done, we'll plug this together and we can start releasing. What's our, what's our timeline, do you think, for?
Well. As soon as we can, the, the CDSMI really kicked us in the pants. It's, was a major undertaking and. Still is ongoing for the next five to six years, but not as serious as what the initial was. So that, it. Put us back probably a year or so, but um, I'm gonna really push them to like. Now that we're at this point, to really get a hard start on it, and, and I don't think it'll take very long once they get going, maybe within a. Nine to twelve months.
Okay.
Um, you know, especially if. I actually have a meeting with them tomorrow, and I can see we need to put this to the forefront, let's put the hammer down on it. You know, and, and it's gonna take a little bit longer, just. Your system's a lot smaller than what we have, you know, um, in, in. Just to build out with the industrial park and the cheese plant and, you know, the, the mains we've had and additional wells. You know, ours is just gonna take some time. There's gonna be a lot more heightens they gotta get flow tests and pressure tests from, so. I, I'll tighten them up with a stronger, like timeline, like let's get rolling.
Well, I mean, I think Eric, you, you've kind of said it too, knowing that you use Spicer, we use Spicer, I think it's, it's probably important to communicate. Uh, you communicated, and I think for us to communicate too, of kind of thinking that through of, of our, our. Method here of pulling, pulling kind of both sides together so that we can, can do comparisons because. Seems pretty useless if we got two, you know, two studies analyzing the same thing and they're, they're constructed off different bases. Then we just don't have that ability to really make good, good decisions off of it, so, okay.
And we could even, um, you know, if, if both boards wish at a later meeting, if. We get to the point where this is closer to realization, um, I have no doubt that, that Mr. House will be happy to come in. I, I don't know the township, but I know we pay them plenty enough that he, he would be more than happy to make an evening meeting. To maybe put this in better terms than I could or a timeline or whatever, so I, I know what comes out of our budget. And uh, it would well afford a request uh, to make an evening meeting, um, and then maybe you as both. Boards could ask, you know, questions from that, but I, I know we could definitely get him here, we wanted to set a. You know, something on the agenda to say, what does this all look like?
Well, we have a January seventh meeting that, you know, you could be requested to be here. Come on, Chagurski.
Just one quick question, and if we're gonna go to it, I apologize. So what is the timeline for the money that you guys have? Is there, is there a timeline for it? There's, it's, it's the earliest, well, what I, what I. Received this week is that we should have been contacted already by Eagle, who will be dispersing cap of that. Immediately. And from the federal side, it's a springtime.
And then what's the timeline for usage?
Good question. I, just thinking, yeah, so if. Yeah, we need to, you know, timeline, if we need to get something in place to get service out to that area to utilize those funds. That's gonna be in our best interest. Obviously quicker, short time.
Yeah, because it's gonna take time to design.
That's what I'm saying, so. You gotta have it allocated within a year or two years, that's probably, we should probably talk about that next.
No, but allocating is a lot different than using, right?
It, it is, but usually there's still sunset allocation, you know, so typically it's two years.
Yeah, it's not based on, I mean, the, the grants and the budget, but it's. It's able to extend. I think that's something we should probably clarify. Make sure you don't have to use it all by September thirty and the twenty five.
Is that something, you know, if, if we're working on this role, but there's still things to go through, we can get an agreement in place to get. Down that path and get that used and get whatever is planned.
So if, if, if we need, uh, I'm just kind of thinking of, of steps here. We need to get our, our studies done. Those really feel like they're the critical elements for us to then start analyzing what makes sense. Go back to this, how does this build the win-win for both of us so that we can kind of look at these numbers and then start assessing it? That'll also, that does the asset management, that, that does, that's really all the pieces. Are there other pieces? Looking at Brad, I'm looking at, I've heard her chat.
Well, I think, you know, as it relates to a comment I think you made earlier there about. How all this fits together, you know, because there's timing issue as it relates to the expenditure of the funds. There's the commencement of design, which, you know, we kind of need to have. You know, if, if the township was gonna build it all by themselves, the design would look a certain way. We're gonna, I'll say when, and we'll, we'll have to have, when, if we work collaboratively, that design will look entirely different, and I think. So, you know, how, how do we effectuate that, or I'll say consummate. That agreement in, in a way that we can immediately begin, because we've talked about. Studies and financial studies and all that stuff, and maybe, you know, maybe there's a quick way, a quicker way to. Take a, you know, a short-term step and a long-term step and, and, you know, um, we've had a conversation with. A financial advisor that worked on this all over the state and brought agencies together and that. Maybe that's something also at a board meeting, they can help us address, you know, short-term issues, they can. Uh, let us know, you know, where the icebergs are, so we, we avoid those, uh, so to speak. Um, that, that may be beneficial to rely on their, their experience with regards to that. So I think that, I mean, if. If the, the respective boards wish, that's certainly something that we can, we can reach out to them, it's been Zinski and company, they, they're a. You know, they buy. You know, yeah, so.
They did do our bonds. I, I think it would certainly, Chad, Eric Huffnick, when I had a chance to, to chat with them and, and they've. They're actually in the midst of doing this in, in several areas of the state, and they reference Jackson a lot of just kind of some of the. The trials and tribulations there and, and, and walking through that process, but I think it, it'd certainly be worthwhile. Chad, maybe Eric and Eric have a conversation with them. Uh, as well as Spicer, I think, you know, Spicer is gonna be a, a, a critical component of this as well. You know, somehow do we, do we utilize both of their services to help us? Sketch out this roadmap, because that, that's where I keep going, and I know I, I keep pushing Justin and Chad on this is. Is it, what, what are the steps in place? And, and I think having someone with, with that level of experience would probably be helpful.
I agree, I agree, but ultimately, we're also gonna need. A form of legal agreement to enter that says, here's our ultimate goal, here's what we want in the meantime.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I. Then that's something that I think you've said from day one, um, I think is, I think it's a really good idea because. There, there are, um, I think opportunities out there, and I think. There, there may be this two-step process that the first step, you know, the, the legal framework around that might be a little. You know, simpler in, in telegraphing with all of our efforts, but at least it provides, I'll say, developers. Economic development agencies, uh, the, the, the construct of an agreement to. You know, buy-in, transact, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, not knowing. You know, as infinitely as the township is, I have that timing, I'm guessing the sooner the better. And, and, and maybe, um, you know, there, there is a. An, an agreement that can be brought in, that, that you know, kind of. Cut and paste, if you will, on, on, you know, setting that framework up like you've talked about for a while, you know, supervisor zone.
And I'm sure there is, but the, the key then is it's got to tie to the ultimate goal. Because the township isn't interested in jumping into a service agreement that if the, if the, uh. The end authority agreement doesn't go through in partnership. Yeah, it's gotta be something that, that brings it up, you know, takes us to that ultimate goal. And not just a, you know, and they tie it together with a, with an interim. Service agreement.
One other thing that we all talked about in, in several meetings is the. The concept of contributions. We talked about, we're thinking in terms of value to the city, and you had talked about contribution, that is, is a pretty vague. Concept, at least to me, in the way it was presented, and I think I've heard any follow-up conversation, it's kind of putting more meat on the bone. I think that's a really important part here for us as we go forward. We've got a lot of planning, um, you know, laying out. Some, um, articles of incorporation, you know, putting, in, in some ways, cart before the horse, before we've actually gotten into some of the brass tacks of. What the transaction will, and it will be a transaction if we're thinking about some type of a, a buy-in or contribution. So we have to really clearly define that, make sure we're all on the same page. I think that contract needs to be started also.
Yeah.
We need to start talking about that.
If, if, you know. Well, I think, you know, if, if the, the, the boards. Think this is a good idea, I can certainly reach out, um, you know, to, and then see and see if they can. Also attend the meeting and begin circulating documents. I mean, to, to supervise your son's point. There's no better time than the present and, and to begin, you know, discussing those documents, you know, I, my, my issue is wide wake. We do need to start kind of, you know, as, you know, uh. Commissioner Eric Hufnagle, um, indicated, you know, I mean, there, there are a lot of details, but. Some of those we can iron up early quickly in this, in the, you know, this initial agreement and get things moving.
Yeah.
And I'm happy to do that, that's the pleasure of the boards.
Two comments, Commissioner Hufnagle, I appreciate your, your thought contribution. I, I had written down, I thought I heard Chad say that, that part of the. The piece was certainly that additional contribution amount. I don't think we know what it looks like yet, but it, it certainly has to be a. A, a facet of this. Uh, I, I would actually suggest, knowing we, we're both working with Spicer already. We work with Bezinski. I know we've got, what did we say, January seventh is our next meeting. I, I would hope, I know how days are coming upon us, but. Even Chad, Eric, if, if you could meet with probably Bezinski and or Spicer in advance, just to. Get a sense of what, what we feel they can offer, uh, so that. Kind of got wheels in motion already by the time we get into that, that January seventh, because we know. Times upon us, and as you talk about these grants, you know, I'm, I'm starting to think about building seasons too. Those windows are pretty tight, knowing, you know, we're really only. We're talking this whole authority piece with the city and the township, but really the. The constraint's twenty-one right now. I mean, I, I don't, don't get a sense from anyone, or, or you in particular, that there's, there's other. Other points, we've really just gotta kind of figure out how to get the wheels going there in, in light of then figuring out this larger partnership. As we go. Chad.
I, I think that's certainly thing, absolutely correct. I think there's other. Connection points that would greatly benefit, uh, existing commercial difference and, and flows that would. You know, um, make, make those properties, uh, much more viable in regards to. Uh, establishing potable water service to them along the, you know, the old twenty-seven corridor, in particular. But if you, like, I can certainly kind of arrange, you know, kind of lasso us together with a, you know, a call with. Bezinski and or Spicer and, and kind of begin to work out the mechanics of that, talk about what maybe. Presented at the January meeting.
Makes sense. Just to maybe add to that question.
Yeah, while you're talking to Bezinski and, uh, sure they can get their attorney on it too, just to clarify. Other requirements related to the. That are outstanding related to our service. Assuming they're all RO bonds tied to, so I don't know how that would work. If they're tied to the city of St. John's, how that transaction would work and might have a whole. You hundred percent know or not, if that takes bond attorney, I don't care who does it, but somebody's not gonna figure that out.
Be a big part of the equation.
Yeah, and I, I, I still think that those bonds are likely to fledge a revenue, right, from the rates and that. So it doesn't secure it to any particular asset other than the rates and charges, so. You know, it may be that, that we had this, um, sort of collection agreement. Uh, by the authority, if the authority is collecting rates and charges and then turns over that money, especially to make the bond payments on the assets.
Back then, Mayor, it was a very similar process that we had to go through, meaning the existing shoulders that were on the accident fund building. That, that major outstanding bonds on, move them, so we. We work with the board to, 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 uh, address those issues. Very heavy lift, yeah, we, we have. I'll reach out to you, Eric. The time we can get together.
Sounds good.
Good. Other pieces on roadmap objectives, time. Other pieces on roadmap objectives, timelines?
Mayor. There. Well, is there, I guess, from the, is there a, a lot of, I don't think I'm date certain that, you know, there is a, you know, the the, you know, pending development that that would be advantageous to have something in effect, just so we can use that as a guiding light, if you will?
Well, obviously, spring would be great, but I know that it might not be possible. But I've talked, I've got one more party that I need to discuss it with a landowner that I haven't had a chance to talk to yet, but I talked to the apartment developer and they're not going to, what we're concerned about is all of the the solar developer is hitting all of them up to to lease, and in which case then we're done, right? We can't move forward. And so the the apartment developer said they talked to Meyer and they're okay with holding off until we figure out what's going on. The gas station wants to put a gas station in, so they're okay. It's the other line, so but he's really pushing, he want, they want to break ground. They want to break ground now. So the sooner the better.
True thinking, if if possible, that we have, I think Chad's talking about this M21 agreement, knowing we've got these other pieces, that would still give building season then.
Okay.
Right. One other thing that I think important, we talked about this in the past, and I don't want to get lost in the shuffle as we, as the wheel is returning so fast here. If you think I'm part of the city, we need to make sure that we have adequate transparency with this and that we are communicating with the public about this. We have to figure out how we're going to communicate that out and have a mechanism for input on this. This is a pretty big change and I don't want us to be moving forward and make that an afterthought.
Yeah.
We're in agreement that it's ready to be signed and then say, oh, by the way, let's make sure we put it out there for people to read. But we, we really have to do the diligence on that.
Yeah. I think once we have a a structure of a plan, we've all said, this is very conceptual yet. And I think as we get consultants in to help us out, that certainly will will lay out pros, cons, benefits.
They'll lay out. You need to talk to people here, here, and here.
Yeah, yeah, that'll that'll be very helpful for us to to share, share back that information because because I think you're right. Right now, there's there's a lot of what ifs and and I think we we need to just understand, yeah, what what the true implication is on on both sides here for both of us. Yep.
Good.
I think we've set our objectives for our next meeting. If there's anything else, you're going to, go ahead, Chad.
Um, I hate to do it, but we want to set additional dates while we're all here because.
Is January 7th the only date we can currently have?
Yes. So that's, I I just.
We were supposed to be done.
We're learning.
Yeah. Well, we'll tell you how it goes.
Uh, what has been, should we start looking? You got February question mark.
February 11th, Tuesday.
February 11th?
Sure, might as well have two meetings, two meetings back to back. We're looking to piggyback at all and we're looking at separate distinct meetings to consolidate.
Saying if there's, yeah, if there's, if there are other meetings that we could could link to.
Ours is the 10th.
What time's yours run?
Seven to usually eight. If we can make that.
If we want.
They don't have a C, they don't have a C manager that's talking.
If we want it at five, maybe, oh, yeah.
We can make it earlier.
I mean, then we're, I mean, it kind of puts us on a on a clock to get our business done.
I don't see an issue with that. Do you? If we made it like 5:30 or 6:00?
That.
On the 10?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we're not going to get done any earlier.
You know, live basketball games on Tuesdays.
That's right.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah.
That would help out a lot.
What's happening?
Did you say the 10?
The 11th, I think, is what we're looking at.
No, the 10th.
I'm sorry, the 10th.
The 10th.
Five of January.
The 10th of February.
January's already set.
Yep, January 7th.
Yeah, yeah.
February 10th.
We're taking five or 5:30.
About 2:00, 5:30, I think it's easier, people coming from Lansing. And then we're kind of keep us locked into an hour and a half. February 10th.
March.
Let's look at March.
Again, ours is the 10th.
We'll go to your place.
I know I'm gone, but we have, I can't, the 10th.
That's fine. We don't have fancy stuff.
That fancy truck stuff travels.
Is it the 10th on March, too?
I cannot do March 10th.
When's yours in March?
Ours would be the 4th.
24th.
24th.
Fourth of the 20th.
The the 4th Monday of 24th. We start at 6:00.
So we start at 5:30.
Well, okay, if we want to do this meeting.
Monday's better for the.
We're just trying to piggyback.
Yeah, we're saying we could piggyback a meeting.
I think we're piggybacking 24th of the city, aren't we?
Yeah, I believe so.
I thought that was the CIP or Planning Commission.
No, that's right. There might be.
I don't have it in my calendar.
No, I don't think it is.
Something in.
I don't think it is.
We have a C 4 o'clock CIP meeting.
Oh, we do.
All that, yeah.
Mr. Rowmey, you're shaking your head. Are you not good on Mondays?
Uh, Mondays are tough. I have a meeting every Monday, uh, every Monday each month. So like that, I made it.
Can we go back to March 11th? Let's try to piggyback.
Motion, sir.
March 11th.
5:30. Yeah. Clark.
I'm looking.
That one works. The Tuesday.
I, you know, like, what we plan.
I was going to say baseball, baseball, Chris, 20 March, 21, 5:30. March 11th.
So we still going to try to do February 10th?
I think February 10th, but he won't be here.
Uh, February 10th for.
Oh, okay. And plus, we're going to have those presentations likely from Spicer.
Right, right, right.
Those probably less legalese and we're we're suggesting March 11th.
What time?
5:30.
Would that one be held here or also at the township?
Let's say here.
Wherever it's told, whatever's easier, we hold it here. Can't figure that word, we're we're all pretty easy. On you.
That gives us two more dates. Is that sufficient for now?
Yeah.
Let's see where we're at.
The February 10th one is at the township.
We're going to do that at the township. Yep. 5:30. March 11th, 5:30.
Right. We can, we'll get ready.
I think we do still have our committee that this room is available.
Yeah, let's confirm.
The 11th, so we'll, we'll do our due diligence and work with the county and make sure the room is available on those days.
Absolutely.
Around. All right, Justin, go ahead. Maybe you're just a clear patient, would you rather have Spike anywhere or February?
I I can't think of January.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody just said bigger.
Bezinski and and Spicer probably together.
Okay.
That'll be full agenda right there. I'm going to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment. There's only one public.
Happy holidays.
You're all good.
First job.
All right. You're up for motion for adjourned.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn today without you. You got a motion that's for, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
All right.
All is the same, the motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Then moved, then moved by Heiser, supported by Gersky, that would be adjourned. Question on that motion. All is prepared for the motion, signify by City 9. Aye. Real to vote. Motion carries adjourned. Thank you.